Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is November 25th, 2025. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your head for a brief invitation. As we come together during this Thanksgiving week, let's take a moment to appreciate our community and the people who make it special. We're grateful for the chance to serve, to work together, and to make a positive difference. Guide us with patience, good intentions, and thoughtful decision-making today. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator Evan Russell. Thank you for your attendance, Evan. I will call on Mrs. Fisher at this point for a motion to approve the minutes.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council meeting and workshop minutes from November the 11th. I find them in order, and I move for approval.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. We have no proclamations or appointments this evening and no public hearings. At this point, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the legislation on tonight's agenda or has any new information on that, they may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wish to address council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will then move into ordinances and second reading, and we have none of those either. Resolutions.
I'll get it started, ma'am. I do have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a donation from the Kettering Parks Foundation for the purchase of an enclosed trailer. The estimated cost is $4,500 with zero budgeted. It's requested by Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergstresser, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow the city to accept a donation from the Parks Foundation for an amount of $4,500 for the purchase of an enclosed trailer that we will use to store and transport an inflatable movie screen that we recently received from the Parks Foundation through donation as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Blade Cutters Inc. for snow and ice removal services. The estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $151,000, and this is requested by the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to contract with Blade Cutters for snow and ice removal at the Kettering Business Park, all of our fire stations, and here at the Government Center complex. The contract will also allow for the contractor to be responsible for removal of snow and ice at various Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts facilities in the hopefully unlikely event that we will have a snowfall event that will require that additional service. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a grant from the Thomas R. Schiff Foundation to help support two photography exhibitions at Rosewood Arts Center. Estimated cost $8,100. Requested by the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've been awarded a grant from the Thomas R. Schiff Foundation for the participation in support of two photography exhibitions in our 2026 Photo Focus Biennial Program. This will go to the Rosewood Arts Center. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
I have a resolution extending the moratorium on the acceptance of zoning applications and granting of zoning approvals for vehicle fueling or recharging establishments, kiosks, automobile washing establishments, convenience stores, and/or small box discount stores. This is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Robelard.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, we have a moratorium in place right now for all those uses that Mr. DuVall stated. We are requesting a six-month extension on that moratorium to give us time to go through the next step of addressing the issues that are associated with those uses. Currently, we recently, the city council recently passed a zoning code amendment that addressed a lot of the code sections that will deal with those issues. The next step is to make sure that the properties that have the most, that are the most effective to our neighbors, residential neighborhoods, are addressed. So we can address those, and we believe in the next six months.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for operation of the city's fair housing program. This is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and the estimated cost is $34,000. I move for its approval.
Second.
Mr. Robelard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Every year for the last many years, we have contracted with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center to run the fair housing aspects of our, of the city that we are required to do by getting funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'll be happy to answer any questions. They have been very effective in helping our citizens over the last many years.
Many years. Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
All right, I think I'm on the wrong one here. Okay. Sorry. Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for the operation.
That is the last one.
Number six. Number, oh, my, number six.
I think it's this one.
Okay, Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and expend a lead hazard reduction program grant from Montgomery County. It is, the cost is, oh, $1,100, with zero budgeted, and it's requested by Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Robelard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Montgomery County has granted the city of Kettering a grant for $1.1 million to address lead hazards in our homes. This is quite a good grant because it is, will allow us to address not only lead hazards in single-family homes, but also in some of our multifamily homes as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, does anyone have any questions? Okay, that's an important program. I'm glad to see that they're coming through. Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. The estimated cost is $665,686.43, and this is requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Okay, Your Honor, thank you. Bear with me for a minute. This is the time of the year that we do a more robust, robust list of supplemental appropriations in order to align our fiscal year and start to prepare for operations in 2026. So in the Street Maintenance Fund, we're requesting a supplemental appropriation of $357,000 for Streets Department personnel and operating. On the personnel side, funding of $60,000 is requested. This is overtime related to significant January and February 2025 snow removal hours and a contingency for major December storms, which hopefully will not occur and not require that these dollars be spent. And I should say that while funding for several requests may not actually be spent, I think it's conservative, good budgeting practices that dictate that we have sufficient amounts appropriated in the event that we have unexpected expenditures. On the operating side of the Street Maintenance Fund, funding of $225,000 is required to enter into a contract with Cargill Inc. for the purchase of salt for the '25, '26 winter season. The 2025 annual budget includes $180,000 in funding. However, the city is contracting to purchase up to 5,500 tons of salt totaling $405,000, and the $225,000 difference is now requested. It is unlikely that entire 5,500 tons will need to be purchased. We certainly hope we don't need to purchase that much salt, but we encumber a high amount to ensure that sufficient salt is available in the case of extreme winter snow events, which, Your Honor, as you move off council, you're guaranteeing me won't happen, right?
You have to move.
Additionally, $72,000 is requested for annual contract snow removal services that were articulated earlier in the agenda. In the State Highway Fund, State Route 48 and State Route 835, a supplemental appropriation of $145,000 is requested for the federal share of 2025 improvements to those routes. This is an ODOT, or this was an ODOT managed resurfacing project with 80% federal funding through ODOT for construction and construction engineering. The contract was awarded to Barrett Paving in November of 2024, and you may recall that the construction took place in 2025. So we are not the lead agency. However, we must record on our books the total project expenditures, including both the local and the federal share. And based on the preliminary construction totals, the federal share of the project is $145,000 over the original federal share. It's a non-cash expenditure. It's offset by grant revenue. We prepaid $442,624. We anticipate no future obligations for the local share of the project. In the Police Pension Fund, there's a supplemental appropriation of $45,000 requested for pension costs related to salaries and overtime in the Police Department. In the EMS Fund and the Fire Debt Service Fund, there is a supplemental appropriation of $16,000 that is requested for EMS billing services. You may know that the monthly fees are based on a percentage of revenues collected, and we're expecting EMS revenue to be greater than the original budget, and the amount needed for the billing services has to increase correspondingly. So the supplemental appropriation will be split between the EMS Fund at $12,000 and the Fire Debt Service Fund at $4,000, as is our policy. In the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Fund, the $4,500 for the trailer needs to be appropriated. In the Special Grants and Programs Fund, we need a supplemental appropriation of $25,00713 for the acceptance of an increased community corrections grant from, or grant funding from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction. The original two-year grant was awarded at over $349,000. The amended grant increases the total to $374,943. So we're getting more money. We use these grant funds for full-time probation officer salaries and benefits and other program expenses. In the, in the Clerk Computer Fund, also in the Special Grants and Programs Fund, we need a supplemental appropriation of $32,000. This fund is used for personnel and operating costs. Current year expenditures reflect the implementation of the Court's software upgrade. In the Community Development Block Grant Program Income area, we need a supplemental appropriation of $32,473.43. What happens is there's revolving loan funds that generate program income, and the program, that was the amount of program income through September of 2025. We can now appropriate the additional dollars for additional loans and program expenditures. So we're just appropriating the revenue that we earned. Transfers to other funds, the, there's, the $357,000 transfer to the Street Maintenance Fund is requested to correspond with the supplemental appropriation I outlined. The $45,000 transfer to Police Pension Fund is requested to correspond to the supplemental appropriation, and I believe that is all of the details regarding our end-of-the-year supplemental appropriations. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? You sure you don't have any more?
I don't think I do.
Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay, we have no ordinances in first reading. Mrs. Haislip, do we have any certifications or petitions this evening?
We do have one certification, Your Honor. It is regarding PC 25-015 zoning text amendment. Planning Commission is recommending approval of amending section 1137.06.18 of the city of Kettering zoning code. A public hearing regarding this request will be held at the December 2nd, 2025 city council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we will hear the manager's report and community update. Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor, I want to once again highlight our fall blood pressure clinic dates held at the Dayton Metro Library at Kettering Marine Branch. They're on Far Hills in the back study room. There are dates left in November and December, and we certainly, this is an effort to help keep our community healthy, and so we encourage people to participate. Medicare Open Enrollment runs through December 7th. Residents can get assistance and schedule individual appointments by calling our senior services coordinator Natalie Storms, who really does a great job helping seniors with these kind of processes, and you can reach her at the number on the screen. My leaves have not all fallen from the trees, and so if you're like me, you need to get your leaves raked up when you can. Residents should rake leaves only to the curb. No sticks, grass, or sod, please, but leaf pickup, the final pass begins December 1st. So hopefully they'll all fall, and everybody will get them to the curb. In November, we celebrate Native American Heritage Month, and our Board of Community Relations encourages everyone to learn more about Native Americans and their contribution to our country and our community, and learn more about Native American heritage month at the resources that are on the screen. We appreciate the Board of Community Relations' work on highlighting these months throughout the year. If you're shopping for Christmas, do it in Kettering or the holidays. Small Business Saturday is November 29th, and we're asking people to show support for Kettering small businesses. This is a good opportunity to express our gratitude for the opportunity to serve you, the city council, as well as the citizens of Kettering, and also say Happy Thanksgiving. Just an operational note that our offices, our administrative offices will be closed Thursday and Friday. Due to the Thanksgiving holiday, the Rumpke service will be delayed one day for Thursday and Friday customers, so Thursday customers on Friday, Friday customers on Saturday. If there are any questions regarding that, people can contact the number on the screen. The tree lighting, the mayor's tree lighting, is Friday, December 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00. It's going to be a fantastic event this year.
Be there or be square.
That's right. And join Mayor Laner in her last, not her last mayor's tree lighting, but the one, the last one you'll officiate, I guess is the right terminology. Just a reminder that our upcoming meetings for city council in the month of December are on the dates on the screen, and there's a couple of unique items there. First, the meetings are back-to-back, well, only one week apart instead of two weeks apart, and on December 2nd, we'll be starting the budget workshop at 5:00 to give an opportunity to really dig in there to the, to the numbers. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for the opportunity to make these remarks.
Does anyone have any questions? Bet they will next week. Thank you, Mr. Grayson. At this time, if you would like to come speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone here who would like to speak before city council tonight?
My name is Sterling Abernathy. I'd like to give some comments about the city's 2025 long-range financial forecast. This was a presentation that you had at your meeting in September 26th. The report forecasts the city's financial sustainability is in jeopardy. It forecasts the city running out of money over the next 10 years. The 10-year financial forecast shows the following. Spending exceeds revenues, and spending grows faster than revenues. In every year, revenue's shortfalls are covered by drawdowns of the city's general fund. The general fund balance will be spent down by $50 million over the 10-year period. That's an average shortfall of $5 million per year. The amount of cash the city has in reserve will drop to less than 30 days of spending by the end of the period. This is well below Kettering's longstanding policy of a minimum 90-day cash reserve. These declines happen every year. The forecast is not just a sudden shortfall popping up eight to 10 years from now. All three forecasts in the past three years by the Finance Department predicted the same results. What's the plan to regain the city's financial sustainability? Controlling spending is one approach to fix this, but the city keeps adding new spending projects. A few examples: first, hiring an architect to update the cost estimate for improving the phrase facility. The cost estimate for this phrase project was $5 million 10 years ago. Second, you've got plans to donate half a million dollars to renovate the Barnes Building to provide offices for Kettering's school system. Third, the city's stormwater sewers in the streets are over 50 years old and in need of replacement. Since the city has spent $375,000 for engineering consultants on this, it's likely that the cost of rebuilding stormwater sewers will be tens of millions of dollars. From what I know, none of these spending projects are included in the forecast. Increasing city revenues is another approach to fix the problem. Expanding the income tax base by adding businesses and residents is one idea, but wages and business profits would need to increase by at least $222 million to generate enough income taxes to close a $5 million annual revenue gap. Unless the city takes action now to reduce forecasted spending, it's highly likely Kettering will increase taxes and fees. Those could include increasing the city's income tax rate, start taxing retirement income in addition to wages and salaries, eliminating the tax credit for Kettering residents who work and pay taxes to other cities, and adding new fees on property tax bills such as stormwater utility fees and street levies. I'm opposed to increasing taxes and fees. The 2026 budget, which you approve in two weeks, budgets $9.4 million more spending than revenues, depleting the city's combined funds balance by 11% in just one year. The 2026 budget is not an example of financial sustainability. For the past three years, the Finance Department has repeatedly presented you long-range forecasts of financial doom for the city. The city's got lots of master plans in progress. What's the plan for the city's financial sustainability? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy. Mr. Grayson, would you like to attempt to address some of those questions, or would you prefer to have Mr. Abernathy come in?
I think we'll be working with you at the next budget workshop on those conversations.
Okay, all right. We will be addressing those at the next workshop. Okay, thank you. I'd like to call Mrs. Fisher at this person to be the first person to give an update.
I'd like to first give a shout-out to Laura Arbour, who wasn't here at our last meeting. Congratulations for coming in to one of our at-large positions. I want to give a shout-out to all of our volunteers. We had a volunteer appreciation luncheon this past week. Excellent time to say thanks to those that serve our city and save our city a lot of money by volunteering, quite frankly. And my third shout-out is to our city employees. Not only did we celebrate, I'll say, yearly milestones of service, but there were special awards that were given out and really good moving stories on employees that went over and beyond what's expected of them and their, and their, I'll say, their square job jars. And so it was a very good program, and I appreciate being part of it. That's all I have here for you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
All right. So last week, I had the privilege to go to Salt Lake City with Ms. DuVall and Mr. Sudditt for the National League of Cities Conference. I believe the number was, there were 3,500 elected officials out there representing 49 of the 50 states, and it was the first time I'd been at that conference. It was amazing. I learned a lot, went to a lot of different sessions, heard neat strategies and ideas that other cities across the country are doing, so I look forward to discussing with you guys and city leadership some of the stuff I learned. But the major theme of the conference was about how do we disagree? They had all these elected officials, you know, present, and they said, what, how do we disagree productively? As a, in a divided nation, how do we talk to each other? And a word that's used often is civility, and their message was, that's too low a bar, and that we need to treat each other with dignity and love, not just civility. And so I thought it was a great message. If you have any interest in looking into it, they provided these, a lot of it was about the Dignity Index, which you can just go to dignity.us to read more about that, and I would encourage you to, if you're interested. But it's, it's basically how do we treat each other and talk to each other and disagree in a productive way? And so as I'm at this conference with people from all over the country, it just made me so proud of Kettering because you hear everyone talking about how their councils interact or how they interact with city staff or residents, and we have a longstanding tradition in Kettering of, we disagree, but we do it in a way that's productive, and we're not name-calling and things like that. So, and I hope you could, you would say the same is true if you ever come up here and talk to us, that, you know, we're listening and we're discussing in a way that, you know, we're showing dignity for each other. So I was just really proud of Kettering, as I always am, but even on a national stage, I thought, man, we do it right. We've done that for a long time, and I look forward to you guys doing the same thing with us when you're up here in a month. So that's it for me. That's what I'm thankful for, anyway. That's what I'm thankful for, anyway. So, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Just two quick comments from me. Like Ms. Fisher said, I had the privilege to attend a volunteer lunch last Thursday. Kettering always talks about our volunteers. It is a huge asset for our community, the number of people that we have to dedicate significant hours of their life to help the city. And as Matt Grayson said, Saturday is Small Business Day. I would encourage people to go shopping in the morning, be home by 12 noon to watch the Ohio State University travel to Ann Arbor, Michigan, and chief, after that, after the victory, go out and celebrate at one of our small business restaurants and hoist an adult beverage in tribute.
Just a couple of quick things. Two weeks ago, the Kettering Leadership Academy had Education Day, and I just want to thank Carrie Basson with the City of Kettering Schools and Katie Looney and Jessica Berry with The Modern who hosted us in the morning. It was a great day, as it always is. Thrilled to have Education Day in the bag and looking forward to January when we go to Kettering Health Network for Health Day. And I can't sum up NLC any better than Shane did, so I'll just leave with that, but it was a wonderful opportunity and always wonderful to meet other elected officials and city staff from across the country. And, you know, I have a friend who says, you don't steal ideas, you rip off and you refine them, and that's kind of, I think, the value of these conferences, is you find those rip-off-and-refine moments. So, that's it.
Just two things. One, if you're looking for a Christmas tree, I'll be on the Tree Lot on the corner of Marshall and Stroop this weekend. Come see me. I'll be the one with the chainsaw.
They're giving you a chainsaw?
No, I'm using a chainsaw for your tree. It's a fresh, it's, that's a long, come see me. It'll be fine. Also, I just want to remind you that that football game at noon is not the only game Saturday. Roll Tide. Finally, NLC. What's refreshing about the conference that we get to attend is that you, I sat down with folks from the Council of Boulder, Colorado, Tempe, Arizona, small, smaller towns like Worthington, Ohio, as well as the folks from Cleveland and, and folks from, yeah, we met the mayors of three of Wyoming's biggest cities, which are not big cities. You find out that the challenges we face here in Kettering are universal, that they're not unique to us, and the benefit of conversations with other elected officials with sometimes vastly more experience than the three of us that traveled this week is that you learn about how things work and the way that we can be better servants and better listeners and better communicators, and how we can find common solutions, and that while we're unique in our challenges here, other cities have faced the same thing before us. And like Shane said and Lisa echoed, we're fortunate here to be in the position we're in, but it was an, just an exciting opportunity. It's the second year in a row that I've been to the NLC meeting and found a lot of value just with the Ohio folks. We all gathered in one room Friday evening, but it is valued, so it was just exciting that the three of us got to go together, spend time, debriefing between sessions, and a lot, a lot of walking. I have never walked that much in four days of my life, so my phone thought it had been stolen by somebody else. So, thanks for the opportunity to send the three of us to NLC. It was profitable and educational from everything that we saw, and have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to report tonight, things that I've already uncovered. The volunteer luncheon is always a special one. I can't resist after hearing the plug for Ohio State and then the plug for Ty, Ty?
Roll Tide. That's a school that wins a lot down south.
I, I, I've heard. I invited my kids all to come over to watch the Notre Dame game and have dinner and a little, maybe early evening get-together, and thanks ABC or NBC, whatever, they just schedule it for 10:30 at night. I'm not sure what we're supposed to do with that, but anyway. I promised you no report, and since we're falling into the football trap, I will stop at this point. I will say, it is Thanksgiving week, and I am so thankful for all of you here in the city and thankful for the opportunity to serve you. I hope I've done at least a halfway decent job, and you're special. The city is special. Staff is very, very special, and so I thank you for that. And with that, if there's no further business to come before City Council tonight, our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be December 2, 2025, and the following one will be December 9 to get it in early in the month. And this meeting is adjourned.